Well, good morning, everybody. We have a couple of things to discuss this morning. First, I wanted to give you all updates on where all of the different work groups were, what they're working on. So the traffic work group will meet again next week. They're waiting until Planning Commission looked at their recommendations. The housing group has been moving forward. They their recommendations went to Planning Commission Monday night as well. And housing is looking at, still looking at affordable housing in the rental housing policy. The Business and Economic Development Group is moving forward. Their recommendations, they will meet again on the 24th, and you guys will probably see their recommendations the week after that. They have been very efficient and they are making a lot of progress on those. And the University Relationships Group is going to meet the 24th as well. So everybody is moving forward. Do y'all have any questions on where any of the other work groups stand? Okey dokey.
Shannon, are you gonna get us or send me the agenda item request for the two recommendations from transportation and housing today?
I thought I sent that to you yesterday, but I will double check.
If Bob, I can write it up for you.
I filled it out. Let me make sure I actually sent it to you. I will do that.
Let us check later. You don't have to stop.
Okay. Um. So yes, so the recommendations from the Traffic Committee and the Housing Committee will go for, be presented for discussion at City Council on Monday night, just to give them time to take a look at all of those, since they are pretty lengthy and digest them.
So Shannon, what will be the next step? And let's assume that things come out of City Council Monday intact or not. What happens then? Does it go back? But yeah, what do you think we need to do then?
What Andy and I talked about was that then it comes to your next meeting. I believe it's July 6th for a vote to be adopted.
For the recommendations to be adopted?
For the recommendations to be adopted. And I don't know, we've been around and around with this about what happens to them. What, once they're adopted, do they go into the comp plan? Does it remain part? Do we update them in the strategic plan? I think that's something we need input from from everybody on. I've heard multiple lines of thought on how, where those go once they're adopted.
And then what? What is the step or we've had this discussion before. I know what's the step or how do the recommendations then get translated into the actual action items that will be implemented to? I guess when you add up all the action items, it will equal the recommendation. Is that gonna emerge from our subgroups through this group?
What? I think that emerges from this group. This is why we've been trying to talk about accountability moving forward and how you guys want to move forward. Do you want to move forward with the same work groups that you have? Do you want to move forward more intentionally with some smaller work groups that have specialized subject matter expertise to move forward? Do you want one accountability group that takes all of these recommendations and moves forward? That was the next, well, number two on the, on the agenda for today.
Okay, right, good, thanks.
Yep. Andy?
I was just gonna say that the plan I had, and I'm certainly open to suggestion, was to put those on the discussion agendas, so council can see them and receive them. And then more or less ratify them at another meeting saying like, these are the elements of my paper we're actually going to support. Then once council ratifies it, staff can go to work and start making headway on putting a plan together for getting those things in place.
How do y'all feel about that? Plan of action?
Andy, say that again. What would happen then under that plan?
Kind of same, after council discusses the recommendations and then the following meeting, I think ratified would might be a better word.
Okay.
Certify that this is the direction we want to go. That would set staff, that'd give us the ability to start putting it into action, kind of with plans to make it work.
So then if staff moves forward with it at that point, maybe that's when we create the kind of broader accountability committee to check in and make sure that all of those things are moving forward.
Yeah, those things, what I read, those aren't the type of things we can just go knock out down a list and come back in two weeks. Some of them are gonna take a whole year because some of those things have budgeted for. There's kind of some big, big concepts in there too.
Right.
So, but, but I guess the question I still don't understand though is that let's take the recommendations from the traffic committee, right? So it doesn't really say anything about how we're gonna meet them. So there's a suggestion, one that we might look at nodes, right? Transportation nodes. The group itself has talked about speed limits of 15 to 20 miles an hour. But none of those are part of the, the recommendations or suggestions. In some cases, they're not even there anywhere. So I guess I still don't understand how we take, you know, any of the recommendations that are pretty general, like safer communities, and then translate that into, what we mean by that is a sidewalk and one-way streets. I don't know, at some point, someone, and maybe it's the professional staff, would have to decide out of the multitude of ways we can meet that recommendation, what are the ones we want the city to do? And I guess I still don't see where that step happens because it's not, well, it maybe comes back to Shannon, what you says our next discussion, because there's, you know, there's certainly the city staff have to have a say in what's realistic and not. So Chief Compost would say, you know, you guys said you want to have all speed limits 15 miles an hour. Well, that's really not realistic. We can't do that. So, you know, or Chris will say, you know, it all say sidewalks in every neighborhood. That's gonna cost $30 million. We probably can't do that. But somebody has to make the decision that it's sidewalks and speed limits. That's the way we're gonna operationalize the recommendation. I still don't quite see the, the best path to doing that.
So I think there's
It makes more sense to look at those recommendations, kind of like a parts and wreck master plan that are used to help guide and influence decisions as they come up. So when you have those transportation related issues, you can refer back to this. Make sure that you're addressing them in the spirit of those recommendations.
I think the other thing Fran is a lot of these recommendations already have action items in the comp plan that that are associated with them. So I can put that list together for you to, to look at what are specific actions that are already out there that are associated with, that could be associated and tied to these. And if at that point, you want the committees, the different work groups to look at those as a way forward. But I think we're gonna get to the point where it is gonna have, some of this work is going to transition to staff. And then do you want? Like I said before, these work groups were not established to be like three-year work groups when, when your citizens volunteered for this. So do you want to create another account, larger, like an accountability committee? A, do you? How do you want to stay on top of that moving forward? That's something this committee has to decide.
And I, and I think, I think Shannon, if I remember, you actually had already done some of that for the Traffic Transportation Committee, right? Where you looked at, I think it was the comp plans and the specifics and kind of plugged those in to a rec, and I think that, that actually worked really well. So maybe that, that's really good idea. Maybe that's the best thing to do. What does the comp plan or other plans already say about ways to implement that? And I've forgotten you'd done that, but that was, that was actually a good way to, and Todd, I think, had done some of that also. So that, maybe that's, maybe that's the approach if the others agree. Yeah, I forgot all about that you had already done that.
So what do you guys think about that? We can, I can take the recommendations and Todd has done a lot of this too. Plug in the different items, action items from the comp plan into these recommendations. And that's the starting point for staff.
I would agree with that.
We like lists.
That sounds like a good plan. Okay, so that is how we will move forward with that. We'll move forward with, these recommendations are gonna go up to council on Monday for discussion. At the following meeting, we'll ask council to ratify them. And then at that point, by that point, I will have taken the comp plan, kind of combined it with those recommendations. I can send that out to everybody and then think about how do you want, how do you want to have oversight on that moving forward? So once we get to the point where staff is working on those action items that are related to each of those recommendations, do you want this implementation committee to be the oversight? What, how do you want the oversight to work moving forward?
So please, some other people step in. I wanted to, okay, this, but we could do it as an oversight. Would, in this group that we're in right now, was one, was every committee of a working group represented by at least one person on our group right now?
Except for the Business and Economic Group.
Okay.
But we can, I can make that, I can try and and fix that.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking if we do it this way, which I do actually like, it'd be nice to have one person who's sort of the institutional memory from the previous working groups.
Okay.
Because they may have discussed things that will come up to here or have resources already. So we wouldn't have to get the whole group together, but we wouldn't lose out on at least someone with knowledge with that, what that group had already done.
Okay. Also, the university group is not represented here either.
So I think Larry Allen is on the university group, I think.
You're right, actually, and Jackie as well. So I just didn't think about.
But that will make sense to me. It's more work for us. So that's just my, my vote is just vote of one, so.
Okay. Anybody else? What are your thoughts on that?
I think an accountability group or nexus would be good.
Jackie, how do you feel about this committee becoming that?
How long would the requirement be to, do we have a timeline or goal and goal? Even for this committee?
Not yet. We're working on that. I think part of that has just been seeing how long it takes the work groups to work through their, their recommendations. So I really foresee all the work groups being done and everything being presented by City Council by the end of August. So that would be the point at which we make a transition into, into another phase.
I makes, well, it makes sense that the same group should transition into an accountability. However, you may have some people who may not be able to make that commitment and some other people who may want to. Me personally, I don't mind. I'm in it for the long haul. I want the City of Clemson to not look like a typical college town that has no insight or oversight or, you know, proper infrastructure. And I think everybody, I'm not speaking for everybody on this call, but I think everybody else wants the same thing, that we want our town to look good. So I'm in it for the long haul. If this, this transition into an accountability committee, I'm, I'm big on accountability because it's one thing to make recommendations and say, we're gonna do this, that, and the other. Fran had some great ideas. However, implementation is another thing. And without oversight, implementation kind of gets lost. Or we go, or we end up with some, another group reconvening the same ideas and we're going around and around the barn and nothing ever gets done. So I'm, I'm big on accountability. So me personally, I don't mind transitioning into accountability.
Okay, and I think once you get to that phase, these meetings are not weekly anymore. Once you have staff working on action items and meeting, moving forward, these accountability meetings are maybe monthly for a little bit and then transition into being quarterly.
That will make it easier for, especially if folks on this committee wants, want to continue on. It'll make it more palatable if they want to help, continue to help. And, and for me personally, it wouldn't matter if it was weekly, bi-weekly, monthly. If, if, if it needs to be done, it needs to be done. So we just gotta get it done. We just need a path forward. And so if we see, and you are doing a great job with giving us a path forward and laying things out. So it's easier to see. So that makes it, that makes it more comprehensive as far as being able to see a path forward and what we have to do. Except.
All right.
Jackie, thank you. I, I was gonna ask the same, the same questions. Monthly to quarterly is something I can, I can definitely commit to. Weekly would not be probably going forward, but but, but based on that schedule, I definitely can.
Okay, that's great, Tom. Anybody else? Okay, I will write up a plan for that and share it with y'all, just so if you want to get down into the details of it, you can and look at the, the composition of that accountability committee. If y'all have thoughts on people or roles that we, you'd like to add to that accountability committee that maybe are not represented here, please let me know. All right. Next up is, I'm trying to plan a couple of meetings and I'd like your input on them. One is a public meeting to kind of, that we would host probably a couple of different sessions within the city in person about Clemson next, just to be out there and be working with the residents on what are the recommendations? Getting people prepared for the redevelopment workshops that are coming? Things like that. Been trying to figure out the timing for that and it looks like probably mid to late July for that. And the goal really is just educate and inform City of Clemson residents on what is going on with Clemson next. Do y'all have any inputs or, or thoughts on that type of meeting?
Yeah, I got a question for Andy, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. What's the status of the regional traffic study? Because you know, that's probably gonna come up at that meeting in July.
I was up with Chip Bentley yesterday. And he said he apologizes for being delinquent on that. Chip's the guy, the, uh, the cog. He was supposed to be putting some notes together and sending everything back out to the group, summarizing what happened at the meeting. So he told me he would have something to us in the next week or so.
All right, good deal.
One of the questions I would ask if I was a resident just coming to that particular meeting and that we're planning in July is why are we still, I thought we were, had a moratorium on building and all these student housing, student housing developments are popping up all over the place. So I know that's something that's, that's gonna be addressed for sure.
Okay. I was thinking of having this more as a drop-in and not have an official presentation, a time when people had to be there of having like a two to three-hour window, once in the morning, once in the afternoon, maybe once after work hours. So people could just drop in. Do you guys think it's more worthwhile to have an official presentation and a time for people to all be there to get on the same page?
Shannon, I like the drop-in idea. That way people can come at their leisure and they can ask whatever's on their mind. A little more fluid and we might be able to address people's questions better that way.
Okay.
Casually, they might feel more, we might feel more approachable in that format. And we are putting little, we're having signs made to put on all the tables at the next, outside on the avenue that, that are for Clemson next, writing people the website, that sort of thing. So hopefully we can generate some more interest that way too.
Okay.
So Shannon, we're, we're starting, I think, next week, a monthly sort of informal gathering called Conversations with Council, which I think will be the third or maybe it's the fourth Thursday of every month. And this one coming up and Andy will be there, the mayor will be there. And I think Bob is just more of an informal discussion with people. We did this before the pandemic. Just come and bring up issues and items of interest. But maybe particularly if people get in the habit of that fourth Thursday being a meeting night, we could take one of those conversations and make it specifically about Clemson next. And actually, those are designed as drop-ins, people can come and go as they want, but, but it's, you know, it's up to them. So rather than another meeting, maybe if the Thursday nights seem to be working, we can just steal one of those nights, knowing that it's a built-in audience and it's already people planning to do that. I think next, I think July, we're gonna do that with the Cure group, the diversity group. Anyway, so that might be a way to do what you're suggesting without having another meeting that's a different one. And maybe people, if they get into the Thursday fourth, you know, the fourth Thursday mode, maybe that'd be an easier way to do it.
I like that, Fran. My only concern was I wanted to provide a couple of different timeframes for people to drop in. So I will, I will check back with you on that and get some more information and we'll, we'll figure out if we can make that work.
I've got a question. Are those different timeframes that you're talking about, are they subjective or are they just general?
Well, I was just thinking if we had it, everybody has a different schedule these days. If we had it so people could come over lunch, if we had it so people could come after work, just a couple of different times during the day, instead of it always being at a time, maybe when there's a certain group of the population that it doesn't work for.
No, I was asking, is it, say, 12 o'clock, we're gonna address traffic and four o'clock?
No, it's totally open. So it would be, you come at any time and address whatever that you want, you would like addressed.
And who would be responding to their questions?
Well, I would be there and I, I'll probably be asking some of you to join me as well.
Everybody got quiet on that one.
Staff will be there too.
I know I'll be there for, you know, even related to traffic. So I'm, I'm committed going forward, weekly or whatever. Just went through a lot of traffic-related requests from DOT post-pandemic. So hopefully by then my schedule should be back to normal in the next couple of weeks. So I'm still committed either way.
Right, I will prob, I will make sure there's people from every work group at each of those. So whether that's y'all or whether that's people on those work groups, people that can speak to kind of the intention and thought behind what the recommendations are and where they're going.
And Shannon, this is Todd. So would be every fourth Thursday, starting in July through how long? I'm just trying to, I was looking at my calendar.
So the fourth Thursday is the conversations with council. I'm not sure when this, let me, let me talk with Fran offline about how that's working and where we could plug this in.
Okay, so we don't have a date yet.
We don't have a date yet.
Okay, just checking, thanks.
Yep, I will let y'all know as soon as we do. The other thing, we have a couple of minutes left before we jump into land use. After, so the land use group and the housing group and the, actually, and the traffic group and the business group, they all have recommendations that intertwine, that have these touchpoints. And as they, as they finalize their recommendations and they start to work, look, work, look at working forward into some more specifics, what do you think about providing a a larger, a larger meeting space for them to come together and talk about how some of all their recommendations work together going forward? That was the next thing on my list, but as I'm thinking about it, I'm thinking, let me put together those comp plan things, the comp plan, where the comp plan and the recommendations meet. And maybe we'll move forward with it that way.
That sounds like a good idea.
Okay. All right. Last thing, just as an FYI, each of the, the groups kind of had a recommendation in there. Well, most of the groups had a recommendation in there about a new hire or a new position within city staff. And most of the groups, and I know this group has talked about waiting on that and looking to see how some of those responsibilities and roles could be filled by existing staff. And I just wanted to give you all the heads up that the Business and Economic Group really feel very strongly about bringing in some sort of business development director. They even went to the lengths of outlining what those different responsibilities and role that person would have moving forward. So I just wanted to give you all the heads up that that is something that's a little different, that they feel pretty strongly about moving forward with, that will be in their recommendations coming forward to you guys.
Shannon, just, just two quick comments on that, Shannon. I guess the first one was, is, I think would be a mistake for the first big item that comes out of the Clemson Next project is money for a new staff person. I think that's a, that's a dangerous way to start the process in terms of we want people to buy into this and participate. And I just think if the first thing that comes out is we're spending $120,000 a year for a new person, probably it's a problem. And, and related to that, I mean, really, the genesis of the Clemson Next was the petition about student housing and high-density housing. And so even though the business is an important piece of this, that really was not where this process started. So again, for the same reason, I think if the first action we take is a business-related, you know, development person, and that's not, that's not important, all right? So don't, not hear what I'm, you know, don't hear what I'm not saying. But again, I think both those would be potentially a harmful starting point for the citizen input process that really was built on student housing and density of housing. If the first actions come out for a business person that's related, but, but I, I don't know that that's the best starting point for this group. But that, again, that's just one person's opinion on that.
Right, and I'm not saying that's the starting point. I'm just giving you all the heads up that other groups have pushed back on that. This group has not. So they have not finalized their recommendations yet. I'm just letting you know that that's, that could be coming. Andy?
I was just gonna say that I agree with Fran. And I think what we can do though is, or what I'd like to do is go to the new chamber president and talk to them about the business development work that this group's doing and see if we can actually get the chamber doing some of these efforts for us.
Okay, I will definitely bring that up to them and, and see what we can, see what we can do. All right, thanks, guys. Anything else from the implementation group? All right, we're gonna jump into land use and development then. Hi Christine and David. So this morning.
Yeah, I'm just, I was always, I'm always confused because I keep on getting this eight o'clock invite and I didn't know whether the Zoom was the same, so.
It's the same one, David, since we do these both as a webinar, because there's so many Planning Commission and Council members here. It's just easier to have one and to kind of split it into two chunks. So you're okay.
Okay.
So this morning, we were gonna take a look at the recommendations we worked on pretty extensively last week and see if you guys are comfortable with kind of moving those forward or if there's ones you wanna revisit. So I will share my screen with you guys. So I sent these out late yesterday. So this is what we're, we're looking at right now as far as recommendations from the land use group. And again, we're keeping these as very general and then we're gonna tie them into the comp plan and tie them into more specific action. That would be the next part of the plan. But the first one is incorporate affordable and workforce housing into the catalyst areas, basically using everything available to you, available appropriate. Basically using everything available to you, available appropriate public public policies, PD agreements and private and nonprofit funding. All right.
Just one question. So do we want to, are we trying to say we're going to limit afford or incorporate? Never mind, never mind. I'm thinking student house. Okay. But yeah, okay, good.
Y'all, are you guys good with the affordable and workforce housing recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay. And David, I've taken all of your, your past comments and they're all included in this.
Okay.
So student and non-student housing. So cultivate appropriately scaled, purpose-built student housing development in specific catalyst areas. That includes functional mixed uses and has access to public transit and is walkable and bikeable to campus and other needs of daily living. So this one is saying, yes, we will, we will move forward with student housing in specific areas.
Question. Is this in essence define what we are talking about as far as student, a purpose-built student housing?
This is not a definition of purpose-built student housing. That would come after that, after this.
Shannon, this is Elaine. I was wondering about in that, in the very last two lines where it talks about access to public transport, I mean, public transit and is walkable and bikeable. Could, could that be and/or is, or it just seems like that's, that's pretty narrow. Where if you're on a really good transit, regular bus schedule and transit, you could be maybe outside the, what someone would consider walkable.
Well, I just think, I mean, the, the, the reason I did that was it, it's not going to probably be walkable to, to all things. If it's walkable to campus, it's not going to be walkable to the grocery store. It's not going to be walkable to the Walmart. And if it's not, if, if you can't get there by any other means in your car, to any of the activities of daily living and campus, then they're going to bring their cars.
Right.
That, so that's why I said, and.
Maybe it needs to be, there needs to be an or at the end, you're walkable and bikeable to campus or other needs of daily living.
Well, again, the or just is one or the other, then I guess it's a problem, but um, and maybe it can be reworded somehow that it's and has at, and has. I don't know. I mean, the key is you, you're not going to be walkable or bikeable to all those things is the issue. And in the way our, our community is laid out, it's just not viable. So, I mean, even if it's within distance, we don't have a complete bike path and sidewalk network for people to safely get to any place. And so, you know, the whole, the whole point of this is if you don't make it easier or as easy to get to these places by foot, bike or transit, they're going to bring their cars. That's just the reality.
Okay. Fran?
So is this, are the current catalyst areas already meeting this requirement? And are we talking about additional catalyst areas in this one or the ones we already have? Or the ones that are identified in the white paper? What, what, what are the catalyst areas that we're, that we're talking about by specific catalyst areas? Because I guess my question is, if they already meet this requirement, then basically that, that's a different issue than if they don't. But is this the same catalyst areas as the white paper? And are those already doing, if we follow that, will those already be doing, meeting these expectations in here?
Well, again, it's a matter of, I, I don't believe that all of those are safely walkable or bikeable to campus right now or to other areas of activities of daily needs or living. And, and I think the transit thing could change, right? My, my hope is that we have an integrated transit system that actually is, you know, that is efficient and has regular routine service, right? Again, i- if, 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 if students can't have reliable frequent transit, get to it safely from wherever they are, be under shelter when they're waiting for the, the, the bus. They're going to take their cars. I mean, if you, if you put all kinds of disincentives for taking transit and, and all those things, you're, you're, and, and we don't have that yet. I mean, there, there may be bus routes to them right now. But I don't believe that they're, 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 it's structured in a way that incentivizes students to, to take transit over their cars.
David, no, I, I don't think anyone disagrees with that. I'm just saying that the way this is written, it's not clear to me if this is referring to the current catalyst areas recommended in the white paper. And if so, you know, basically what we really are saying here is that we want the catalyst areas to be built as designed, because some, I don't know if they all have student housing in them right now or not. For instance, this implies that all, each catalyst area should have student housing, a purpose-built student housing. I don't know if that is the case in the, in the current recommendations. If it's not, then we're adding something to the catalyst areas. I just don't know that this clearly says anything in terms of, is this the catalyst areas from the white paper? And if it is, what we're really saying is we support the catalyst areas as identified in the white paper. And again, I don't know if they're all student, if they all currently include student-built housing. If not, we probably don't want to say they should unless we're changing the design. And then if they already meet the transit requirement, I, I, this is just confusing what it's, this is referring to. Is it the eight or nine is they exist or is this a new, a new model that we want student housing only in catalyst areas? What is this really anchored by?
I think the way it's worded right here, it says that not in all the catalyst areas, but in specific ones that, and I guess we would identify which ones those are through the redevelopment workshop process as you go through that for the different catalyst areas. But the ones where you decide student-built housing is appropriate, that it would be appropriately scaled, would include functional mixed uses, have access to public transit, would be safely walkable and bikeable.
Yeah.
But we would want that for all the catalyst areas, whether it's student density housing or not. Why would we not want every catalyst area to be walkable, bikeable and everything else in here?
Well, this is in the category called facilitate student, well, and non-student housing. All right. Then take out in specific and identified catalyst areas. And I guess Fran, my perspective on this, unless you do all those things in concert, you're not going to achieve the goal that we're trying to get to, right?
I, I agree, David.
You guys happy with this? Do you want me to, to wordsmith it a little bit more to try and get more of your intention in there?
I think once we say identified, then and, and that, that makes it the catalyst areas.
Yeah, because there's going to be a lot of other areas where student housing will pop up, especially areas that are already zoned and there's going to be redevelopment. Uh, there's going to be teardowns and that type of thing. So I think, I think the catalyst areas have to have all the things we're talking about, bikeable, walkable. Right. Because those are the specific areas we're targeting.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think if you, I mean, that's the other thing is the one thing you find if you go into communities have done transit oriented development, that's where the, the, the market goes. I mean, because those are the most valuable pieces of property, you know, because you have those things.
Agree.
Okay. Are we, are we in agreement on, on that recommendation moving forward?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
So the next one is establish purpose-built student housing as a new type within the residential developments category in the table of uses for residential districts in the zoning ordinance. I think that's, that's the wording, although Todd and Andy, you can help me with that. If that needs to change. Okay. The next one is in designated catalyst areas, use the PD process, neighborhood planning processes, other policy and zoning tools and new funding mechanisms to target new housing options to non-students where desired. I think this is basically, you're going to do everything you can to develop new housing options for non-students. Everybody okay with that one?
Good.
Yes.
So established purpose-built student housing was in here twice. So it's, it's in here twice unless y'all just want to take it out. The next one is consider removing residential use even as mixed use by right from all non-residential districts. It could be allowed in a PD or catalyst overlay district, including parcels of less than two acres in commercial districts.
Just the districts needs to be plural.
Oh, thank you. Any thoughts on that one? All right. Next one is create overlay districts for the following areas, west downtown, east downtown, Clemson Triangle and Clemson Crossing and others as identified and deemed appropriate.
So go back to one, I mean, because I almost, that needs to, no, create overlays, you know, so shouldn't that be the three be number one, since that's the the primary objective? And then is one really related to three in this case? Cause I, I'm confused if we're targeting residential, student, purpose-built student housing as a, as a zoning use or as a, a condition of an overlay or both?
I think it was in the original recommendations because they were thinking it was both.
Okay.
But it is a little confusing to have it in here twice.
Well, I think, I think if one becomes established guidelines for purpose-built student housing, a new type in the overlay district, then the overlay district might have more specific requirements for student or, or, or requirements and/or opportunities for student-built housing than the, the broad zoning classification. You understand? Does that make sense?
I, yeah.
Yeah, this is Todd and David, you're, you're hitting on, I was just typing something in the chat box. That two things, one, we have, first, we've sent y'all a definition of purpose-built student housing, have not received any feedback on that. And we'd like to make sure that that language is acceptable to y'all. And then second is where do you want this allowed and where do you not want it allowed? That, because if, I, it seems like the, 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 the direction that this is going and following the recommendations of the white paper, which I know we're still being decided as to which ones we will follow. That having that overlay districts would be relatively easy. But if you say purpose-built housing is not allowed in RM4 or only allowed in RM4, then that would be every parcel of land zoned RM4 in the city. You can't say it's, well, I mean, if you, if your intention is to say, well, we'll allow it in this RM4 over on this part of town, but not on this side of town. That will create some challenges and probably have to remain that the city will be, have multiple overlay districts. And so we, I kind of need some direction from this committee at some point, not today. A, do you approve of the language we have submitted? And B, where do you want to allow purpose-built student housing and where do you want to deny it?
Well, and I guess Todd, my thought was this purpose boost, purpose-built student housing zoning classification would be an addition to the housing type. So it wouldn't be RM4, it would be its own classification. And that we would designate on the zoning map where, where that would be an allowed use.
Okay, I follow you. The two things that will be substantially more complicated because, which is no reason not to do it. I'm just pointing out that if we are creating a purpose-built student housing zoning classification and we take a parcel of land north of the tracks, it's 12 acres. We want it there. And we say, well, let's rezone that to PB, purpose-built. What else is allowed there? Is that the only thing that can be built there?
No, I don't, I don't think that. I think.
Okay. So if that's the case, David, then we will need to go through the entire use table, determine, you know, the, you know, 800 uses that we allow, which ones are compatible with that. And then, and then come up with the district standards for that, how, what, what heights, density setbacks, all the, write a complete different, writing a different zoning classification versus, and, and then rezoning the city for that classification. It was just going to be a, a lengthier process and require a lot of input on not only the development of the standards for that district, which, you know, we're prepared to do, we just, but you know, this is, we'll, we'll need a lot of guidance because y'all may not agree with what staff recommends. And then I think equally important will be where the city decides is appropriate to allow that, because it could, you know, is going to have significant impact on adjacent properties. There'll be people saying, well, why can't I build it, but they get it and, you know, all, all that kind of stuff. So there'll be a political component, a, an informational component, and then a major logistical component. So just, just throwing that out there, I think step one would be having this committee give some kind of feedback to staff on our definition that we've sent y'all about purpose-built student housing. And then from there, we're going to have, I think, need to workshop specifically focused on that to walk y'all through what's involved in doing what you're requesting. And it started getting some kind of idea about what y'all's thinking is of all the other uses and standards that will be associated with it. And then we can get down to where it will be applied. So those are just a couple of thoughts.
Jackie?
Andy, when did you send out that definition? Uh, because I had asked about the, the definition earlier. So obviously I didn't, I'll talk about me, I didn't get it. Do you remember when you sent that out?
Jackie, it's in the drive and I will resend that to everyone.
Okay, that's probably, did it go straight to the drive or did an email go out saying it's in the drive?
Um, I'm pretty sure we sent an email out with a link to the drive, but I will, I can double check and I can just send it to you as a PDA.
Okay. Is this possible? I missed it. I was just asking. Okay.
I will take care of it. Thanks.
No problem. I will look, look that over.
Okay.
My second point is, we're looking at the purpose why the white paper suggested the overlays to begin with. And then we go back to why we have this committee to begin with is to put a cap on, I wouldn't say cap, let me rephrase that. Constrict on student housing in Clemson. So we're not a one, one pony show. And so in, in our discussions today, we're talking about rezoning and this and that. I think what we're trying to do with the overlays and this committee is try to make the process a lot simpler and a lot straightforward without the developers finding loopholes to be able to. the developers finding loopholes to be able to build something where we don't want it for our visions and goals. And then have, you know, something like, you know, the the business area empty and we've got all these housing areas in places where they're not desirable. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I I agree, I mean, and Todd, I I agree that it's a heavy lift, there's no doubt about it. But I I'm a firm believer that the only way we're going to be able to control where student purpose-built student housing is, is to create its own zoning classification. And that those zoning areas should be on main arterials with access to transit with sidewalk priority prioritization and bike lane prioritization. And if we allow purpose-built student housing in R4 or or any other residential zoning classification, then we've just undermined the whole process. Because it will happen where it happens. And and so the only way I think that we can, we can control where's purpose-built student housing is to avoid infringing on 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 at-risk neighborhoods. To make sure that that uses are compatible around it. And to make sure that it works to keep traffic minimized. Then I think we're just, we're just pushing a rock uphill.
Well, there there are other ways to accomplish it. The objective that we can discuss at some point, but other than what's being proposed here. Because we already have the the only areas that we allow density where where there's going to be any significant impact is along our corridors and adjacent to campus, that's the current zoning. And that's what was recommended by the white paper. When you move out into some of the RM four areas that you'd have a couple of options and ways to handle that, one would be to to amend the ordinance to say that a portion or maybe not all, but you may choose all, but a portion has to be built. Is allowed to be built as purpose-built and then the balance is required to be built and for more adaptable use. Or you might say that all units have to do it. That would be a simple conditional change that could be done in a day and would would provide the same protections. What we can't control is who is going to live in there. And so that you take like the estate or the farm, those single-family patio home developments built under the railroad tracks that are all single-family homes, they're two and three bedrooms, three bathrooms, but they're and they're they're they were designed with student population in mind. But they could I know there are non-students living in there. The 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 ability to to control the which human beings are residing in there is limited by all manner of laws and guidelines, but the we do have control over what gets built physically and that and and inserting those recommendations into our conditional use standards for development in RM four and RM three would be another way to accomplish what you're doing without having to create a purpose-built housing district. Because I thought, or I think that the overlay districts certainly are going to identify where we want to encourage that. And those overlay districts are going to be coming with a host of other standards, reduction in parking or lightening up on some of the commercial requirements or whatever, whatever is decided. And included in that, at least in some of our proposed drafts, was this is where purpose-built housing must be built, that we don't want anything but that in those areas. So anyway, there there's just more more ways to get where you want to go, I think, than creating a district and then rezoning properties as purpose-built student housing district that we can accomplish it in other ways.
Well, maybe I'm I'm not. You know, again, it's all the devil's in the details and all that. And you know, the the cleanest, simplest way to regulate it is to create its own district. I mean, I'm also concerned about threats to to our, you know, lower-income neighborhoods where that happened to be in prime locations. You know, for that kind of development too, so you know.
Well,
I just think getting it all out in the open as a as a proactive effort, agreeing, it's a heavy lift, it's a lot of work. But you know, if we keep on trying to do do the same thing and expect different outcomes, then I think we're we're I think it's a quote paraphrase from Einstein, we're fools, basically, so. So, you know, the problem with all those other things is it's not proactive, it's reactive, right? So.
I I would have to disagree, but I mean, we're not afraid of a heavy lift and and everything that we're discussing here, both you and I is designed to not keep doing the same thing, these would be significant changes to the ordinance, I'm just saying there are alternative ways to to get to where you want to be, but and and it would not be as heavy a lift to to modify the existing ordinances to get the results that you want. That anyway, I I because I don't think, I think it's less clean to to just create a new district because doing that's come with a broad range of of challenges and perhaps unintended consequences, whereas districts that we have to allow or disallow the things that the city wants or does not want is a you know, a simpler or an alternative approach. And that that for the for our, you know, historically black neighborhoods, you know, they're not zoned for any kind of significant density that I'm not saying they're not under pressure because they are and and that I think that we're with the Shaw Center and initiatives that we're moving towards providing protections there, but additional standards can be applied there that we can we can create. We we can eliminate, we can do, we reduce the density that's already allowed further if that if that would be an objective. And again, those are pinstrokes that can be done in a day, assuming that the the community, the planning commission and council approves it, but the actual develop that language is is simple, it's just once we know what y'all to accomplish, that staff would like the opportunity to take, to be clear on what you're trying to accomplish and then present y'all with options of ways to get there, and it might be that y'all decide to go with exactly what you proposed, David, but I do think that there there are other ways to get there, but anyway, I don't want to take up any more y'all's time.
All right, y'all, I have to jump off the call right now. David and Todd, I'm going to reach out to you this week, we're going to see if we can come up with a couple of different versions of that recommendation that reflect what both of you all are saying, so we can bring it back to the committee next week. Does that work for you guys?
Sure, I mean, I don't know that even what we're discussing modifies the recommendation at this point, but but I guess maybe it does.
I think the intention, trying to figure out what the intention of that is what I'm trying to get at.
And I'm certainly willing to look at options, you know, once we explore what the limits and and opportunities are in different options, but.
Okay. All right, if y'all have anything that you need from me this week, please let me know. Shoot me an email, Fran.
Just quickly, I I think the discussion of David and Todd just had, comes back to what we talked about in our earlier meeting, that the implementation and the how to do this is not the same as the recommendations we're making and and the next step's going to have to be for every recommendation. And that was a healthy discussion, I liked it, but that that's the same process that I think is going to have to happen for many of these recommendations where staff then get, does get involved. And we sort of hammer out the how to do it kind of thing, and I think that was actually a pretty good model for what I think might be the next step, once our recommendations are approved, that was excellent.
Great, thanks Fran. All right, I'm going to let you all continue meeting, I will be back in touch. Let me see.
Someone run the screen and walk us through the rest of it or or?
I do not, does anyone have those? I don't have, I don't have those to put up on my screen.
I think the person running the meeting is the one that can, is going to be able to share the screen, I don't think we have that ability, so.
Okay, then.
Yeah, no, we do, we do, it just someone's got to find it.
She was going to let me share the screen, but I don't know how to get that document.
Yeah.
That's the only problem.
All right. It's in the Google Drive, right?
I'm looking.
All right, we're all right here, I found it. I think.
The link is in Shannon's email that came out.
I found it. Is this, this is it, right? This was the one she uploaded most recently.
Yes, that's it.
Okay. So who's running the meeting?
What did we leave off on here? Was it number three? Are we now on number four here?
Three.
Three.
Hey, Andy?
Yeah.
If I leave, I think I'm going to end the webinar, I'm looking for a different button, do you have?
You can, there should be a way to hand it off, if you push leave, it should give you an option to to make someone else the.
I don't have a leave button is my issue at the moment. Got an end button.
All right, yeah, well, E, end.
All right.
Well, I'd say.
Wait, I got it, all right.
All right, we're all here?
Yeah.
Yep, still here.
Okay.
Well, what do y'all think about number four?
I've got all this stuff up on my screen, I see.
We have the RFP that is out on the street. We've advertised for that, those for the uptown workshop. They'll be due on the 30th.
Okay.
Number five, if y'all want to keep on trucking here. It's pretty
Yeah.
great forward stuff there.
Kind of seems like a no-brainer.
Those look okay.
Yeah, it's just kind of just a pretty clear statement there.
I got a question, the the link that she sent about the Greer. Is that something kind of like, don't reinvent the wheel to see what they did, they got a a good idea over here, let's implement some of that, is that what's in here, I see some of the same language.
Jackie, I like what Greer did. Their former city manager who put all that into place is going to be at the same conference I'm at tomorrow. I'm going to catch up with him and I want to ask if he would be willing to come meet with our land development committee and talk about how they did some of that stuff. And I also really like the the form-based codes that they were doing, and I've seen in other places that kind of helped make it so you can better guarantee the look and feel of what's going in a certain place.
Yeah, it was easier.
Doing.
Yeah, it was straightforward, it was easy to follow and and very common sense.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at it in detail, I've been working to a big deadline this Friday, but I'll I'll go through it too. But yeah, I would love the idea of bringing him in and engaging him. You know, in in maybe our workshop too, so, um, workshops. So I'd love to hear.
So a question, I'm sorry, I didn't put my hand up. On expanding capacity and foster collaboration on number one. Are, is this a paid position? Down, down? Yeah, we're we're already there, number one, not not number one up here. Are we considering hiring or is a consultant, a, on a, okay, consultant? Do we have somebody in mind, is it a group if or just one person that's going to do that?
Jackie, I don't know, I think it might depend on the scenario we're working under, but I like the idea of at least starting off with the consultant so that we can kind of see the extent of what we're getting into.
And I don't know whether real estate is the right term, I think development consultant is maybe the right term we want to use there and and I don't know whether Tom, you might know, does ULI have recommendations or or resources that we can engage?
Yeah, I think they do.
Because if the Urban Land Institute, I mean, I don't know whether we need, the city needs to become a member of that or what, but I think that would be a great thing if if municipalities are 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 members of that organization. And then have the op, you know, as maximum access to whatever resources they can bring to bear. But that's frankly, one of the most innovative groups, right? So.
Yeah, I I I think that would be a great idea and allow a certain amount of people to access it. You know, the other thing is the MRED program, I don't know, you know, they they have a lot of you know, they have a lot of access to some information as well. But I think ULI, absolutely. I think a lot of the the concepts and philosophies of ULI would open a lot of eyes. Just on everything from sustainability to, I mean, it's it's really best practices and uses, you know, a lot of examples. You know, really all over the country, it's it's a great place to to get, you know, to reference and get some ideas. You know, I'm yeah, I I totally agree with that, it's a great idea.
Um, I sent some information to Shannon last week about ULI and Ed McMahon, who is a great speaker. And there are videos of him, but maybe we can either get him to come and talk to us when the time is right or watch some of his his presentations because they are excellent, very, very good. I wholeheartedly agree with with Tom that they might have people they can recommend for us to to tap into as well. It's a great organization.
Jackie, your hand was up next.
Yeah, going back to my question about the real estate, and I like the idea about changing it to development, that makes more sense. Because of the following sentences that say they have to support negotiate with developers, property owners and other stakeholders. So I don't, I think real estate agent might be conflicted, you know, with their own businesses and then the city's business, I don't, I don't know, that's a question, actually. What do you think, Todd or Andy?
I like the idea of development, I think it's more all-encompassing.
Yeah.
Dr. McGuire?
Actually, Jackie just covered that, I was I was going to say and answer Jackie's first question that we we can make these whatever we want them to be, these are the recommendations coming from us, so if we're not comfortable with the terminology. We're not comfortable with the terminology or the purpose or the focus, Jackie, that's that's what we're being asked to do is make changes, so. You already did that, so I just wanna reinforce that that's uh, that's actually our role is to make these what we think they need to be.
And and that's why I was asking the question, you know, real estate developer, and then you look at the second sentence, asking. Them to do all of these things. That's kind of, yeah, I I like the development piece changed.
I really like that idea of the ULI because I've found that a lot of times these organizations, if you remember, they provide a lot of free services that consultants charge a lot of money for.
Should we add that as a recommendation?
I think that's a good idea.
I like.
Yep.
I I just cut out. I think somebody from the city too could attend some of these meetings. Even if they're virtual, you know, specific ULI. You know, or or go to the conference, I think. I think a lot would be gained, and you know, the local ones. They have them in Charlotte, a good bit, Atlanta.
Very good.
I'm also, I typically go to the the student housing. It's a it's a conference. Usually they have it in Austin, Texas, just to get ideas and find out, you know, what all the nationals are doing. And I either am gonna go in July or I'm going to get pay for the. You know, all the meetings that that are, you know, that can be recorded, and there will be certain things that. Will pertain to Clemson that I think we could. You know, we could, we could gain some knowledge in terms of what what's next, what they're, you know, kinda what they're doing and. You know, I think in in a lot of small towns. Especially where there's neighborhoods close to campus that, you know, a lot of other schools are going through this and they're coming up with some innovative ideas. On how to do exactly what we're talking about, and it may be one or two things that we can we can look at. Because I think what's happened is a lot of really just the, you know, with the mixed use, a lot of. Developments have occurred in downtown and they've gone from three hundred beds to twelve or fifteen hundred beds and. Been too big for pretty much any community, so. Yeah, that's an that's an event that's attended by two twenty-five hundred people and. There's always awards for best practices. You know, best architecture, best, you know, and they're they're still the same. They wanna be near transit as well. They wanna be sustainable and and we may find some ideas where they're. Actually contributing to the public good in terms of, you know, some type of impact fees or whatever that gets spread out for parks and. You know, also contribute to funds for affordable and low-income housing, so. I'll make sure I have that and I can, I don't know if I can put it on the Google Drive or not, but I I will try. That's that's in mid-July.
I mean, I I'm all for, oh, Jackie had her hand up.
Jackie, your hands, is that a residual hand from earlier or do you have?
Yeah, let me let me take, put my hand down, sorry.
Yeah, I'm all for sending members of this task force to those kinda conferences. Because it really is eye-opening and you're getting to see best practices from around the country. And learn mistakes and 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 successes from others. And so I'm I'm all for that. The other thing, do we wanna add a recommend, the third recommendation under this to engage the Clemson's Masters of Real Estate Development Program? Or seek engagement? I don't, you know, whether it'll take us on, it all depends upon.
I I think so. Years ago, when I had much more staff, I have really nobody now, but. I had at least five different. Kinda interns, you know, paid positions back then and. The just the things I learned from these mass, these students were incredible. You know, you know, some things maybe aren't practical or or don't fit, but I, you know, if you could get. You know, a person or two that would be willing to. You know, come in, I I think, you know, because then what's happens is you're gonna get. You're gonna get information from ULI as as well as some other things and, you know, I don't know if they could take it on as a project or not, but. You'd be, I I was really surprised at the amount of practical knowledge that they could give and, you know, like I said, I learned a lot. So.
Well, I mean, you know, there's there's several ways. One is they can take it on as a as a project, right? And two, we could, I mean, we should probably have an intern from their program. Involved in this effort. Or two, right? So I don't know whether the city, I know the city probably does planning interns, right, but. But, you know, it wouldn't be bad to have an intern engaged in this process. You'd be surprised with all the stuff that students can bring, and you may not be surprised. Bring to the picture, but they can be doing searches, they can be finding best practices, they can. Give us a fine resources for us, so certainly would be something to think about. I mean, is everyone comfortable adding that as a recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
At least you have the opportunity if it's in there.
Yes.
Well, anything else, guys? I think that's the end of the document unless David can scroll down and see if there's a whole lot left there.
No, no, good. All right.
Yay.
Andy, congratulations on your being being named. You know, city manager and from from interim. I'm hoping that you can you can work this. This this Google thing better after becoming after this high position, so.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you all, but my digital meeting skills are limited. And then it's Mark.
Okay. Well, yeah, congratulations, Andy.
Let me just suggest then that before we go that we vote, that we that we approve by or not by vote. These recommendations, maybe just by all in favor raising their hand so we can report back something official from this group.
I second that.
Good, thanks, Jackie. So all in favor of moving forward, those recommendations as coming from the land use committee. Raise your hand.
I'm trying. Where's my hand?
Bottom right.
Bottom right. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. See, see, we need the intern. My thirteen-year-old son can handle this.
Tom, stop picking on Andy and his Google skills.
Yeah, right.
Oh, I'm I'm terrible. Hey, I can call Dr. Bruce Yandle, my old advisor in the eighties, and we can do some transparencies.
All right, so.
Old enough to know about transparency.
Well, not only that, we could mimeograph some things.
And then, but smell it before you distribute it now.
Yeah, and then make a Xerox copy.
All right, so that that looks unanimous to report that back to Shannon. We're okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you. Lynn, you voted. Lynn, you took your hand down already, right?
Yes, sorry.
Excellent. All right, any anything else with this meeting or I don't know if it was, I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I don't know. Is that the last agenda item?
Well, the only other thing was to walk through the Greer stuff. I'm not prepared to really have a substantive discussion on that today. And we only have seven minutes left, so. I would suggest tabling that for next time.
All right, sounds good to me. Can I stop the recording from my screen or does someone else have to do that?
I can do it.
Okay, so if we're okay, well, we'll motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, click your leave button. And we'll be done. All right.